Good evening, everyone. We acknowledge, appreciate that the land in which we gather is the traditional onceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation, and we have occupied this territory since time immemorable. I'll order, and I just want to thank members of council that were present and councils that came to us by telecommunications. I know that Trevor, Council McKinnon, was out of the province on June 28th for the visit for his Royal Highness Prince Edward. It was a very delightful event here at City Hall with the prince and his entourage, and I want to thank the councils that attended and those that phoned in. And I also want to thank the committee. There was a group of members of the Prince Edward Battery Group, Ray Brow, Doug Martin, Greg Lent with the PEI Regiment Military Museum, and Ken Shelton. And these gentlemen were very instrumental in getting things prepared for the Prince Edward Battery and also the backgrounder that they provided. And I passed on forward it to his Holy, his Royal Highness. And there was another piece of document that I will forward on to you all as members of council, and that's the piece that Natalie Munn put together. She's our Heritage Officer on the invasion of Sherle Town in 1775 by the Americans, November 17th and November 18th. So again, it was a well-put-together event by the PEI Regiment and Valerie Dockery. I want to thank her on behalf of City Council. Declarations of conflict of interest. None. Approved of the agenda, moved by Council Matard, second by Council Ramsey. All in favor? Deputy, no problem?
In favor.
Okay. So both the deputy, Deputy Mary Yankoff, and Mike Russ, Director of Integrated Growth, are calling in. Okay. Adoption of previous draft minutes of council. Regular meeting, June 10th. Special meetings, June 24th and 28th. Moved by Council Ramsey. Second by Council McKinnon. All those in favor? Deputy?
In favor.
Okay. Business arise in the minutes? Okay. I believe, Council McCabe, are you going to?
No, I'm checking my answers.
Good. So deputy, you're going to, you will be presenting the planning and heritage report and resolutions?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you want to start?
Sure. Okey-dokey. Thank you, everybody. And this evening, I will just let you know that we have three resolutions for your consideration, and first and a second reading. Also, I'll note that the heritage, both the Heritage Committee Board and the Design Review Board did not meet this past month. The Affordable Housing Advisory Committee met on June 17th. The Planning and Heritage Committee met on June 5th, and the Planning Board met on July 5th. And my correction, Planning and Heritage Committee on July 5th. List of your permits are included in the back of your, at the end of the package. And I will note that you'll know that our resolution number one this evening, you'll notice in your report that the staff and committee have differing recommendations. So just, just to note that. And I'll also just highlight from the past month.
Deputy?
We want to counsel from there.
Yeah, we're losing.
Also, yes?
We're losing parts and pieces of you.
Oh.
Just see if you can relocate.
How am I now?
Good. Good. Sounds like Brighton.
Sure.
Thank you.
Now?
Yes, good.
Okay. Yep, sure. Sorry about that. And so the consultant has, that's been leading our zoning and development bylaw. And this will be, public will review, and we encourage them to submit in any more feedback before this moves on to Planning Board and on to a public meeting in the fall. And other than that, if anyone has any questions, I will do my best to answer. Director Mike is online, as well as our planning managers are there. And if anyone needs to be clarification and they prefer it in person, they can go through Council and McCabe. So thank you.
Okay. So Council McCabe, are you going to pick up some of the answers, or you're just? Can I just get you on there?
No, I think, I know Deputy Mary, you did cut out a few, and a few things, but what maybe we could do is we can just put it into an email. She can summarize what she was saying, and council can get it. It was just an update.
Okay. Is that all right with you, deputy?
Perfect.
Okay. Counsel Twill, question?
Thank you. Thank you for your report, Deputy Mayor. As Chair of Planning, as you know, there's been a lot of discussion regarding the adoption of the official plan. And I think the aim and objective is to bring in the official plan, have it approved by council in August. And if I'm wrong, I apologize. But if, if that's the case, this is still an opportunity between now and August for residents in the city, regardless of what community, the community they live in, there's still an opportunity to have an open house or a public meeting. I've talked to residents across the city. They're very, very concerned about the, the direction of the official plan. They're concerned about public engagement in terms of when the official plan is passed, and concerned about their own respective neighborhood and community. So I wanted to bring that forward, attempting to be proactive and to not wait till a resolution comes to the floor, but to bring it forward now so that you're aware, I'm sure you are aware, there are concerns from people throughout the city of Sherle Town that want to make sure that their neighborhood, their community is truly protected, enhanced, and improved. And they certainly don't want to contend or have to combat development that is not consistent with the dynamics of their neighborhood. So I, Deputy Mayor, I just wanted to bring that forward in the spirit of collaboration. Thank you.
Deputy?
Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship, through to Counsel Twill. And I appreciate your, your words and sentiment on this. We have had many, many public engagement sessions throughout the last couple of years. And at this stage, the next step is to go through to Planning Board, or a recommendation from, from staff to Planning Board, and then on to council. So at this stage in the game, there is no, there is no more actual public meetings. However, there is still lots of time for residents to submit any more information that they would like in terms of concerns, or negative or positive feedback. In terms of having more public consultation, that will come down to council's decision. But at this stage, the Planning Board, the Planning and Heritage Committee, and the Planning and Heritage Staff do believe that we have followed the process over and above for such an important document. However, like I say, I'll leave that up to council. And if either one of our managers or Director Mike want to add to that, I'm open for their, their contribution to this conversation.
Mr. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Madam Chair. I would maybe just add that if council is of the opinion that they wanted to move forward with further public engagement on the official plan, there would likely be a budgetary impact as well. As you're aware, at the council meeting, I believe this past month, council approved a change in scope for the existing contract for the official plan to add additional funds to complete the work that has been completed, or had, has been worked on to date. So for further public engagement, we would likely expect additional costs beyond that.
Did you want to add? Do you want to add something, Council McCabe? Could you just end him, Council McCabe? Just one second.
I think I'm trying to clarify on Counsel Twill's question with the official plan being that overarching higher document that kind of leads.
The big scope.
But I think you're thinking more the impact on that direct, and maybe I'm misunderstanding on like the zoning and development pieces that fall underneath that official plan. And I think there's still lots of consultation to come with that piece. But that's what I would think when I heard your question, Counsel Twill, that it was more the specifics underneath that plan that we're hoping to still have more input.
Okay. Do you want to put the resolution to the floor?
I did ask.
It's not working. You have to press a button.
I did press it.
Pressing. Okay. Go ahead. Stand there, Counsel Twill.
No, I wasn't concentrating on the zoning and development bylaw and the proposed changes to that. I was talking primarily about the official plan because it is a guiding document, right? So throughout the city, and it plays an indispensable role as to what direction the city is going to go in. So my request tonight is a result of consultation with some residents throughout the city, and they're, they're concerned. And I didn't want, again, I'll reiterate, I didn't want to wait till a resident, resolution comes forward. I wanted to bring it up now so that everyone is aware there are still major concerns with the official plan throughout the city of Sherle Town. And I just wanted to be candid and honest with everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, sir. Do you want to read a resolution? CAO? Read a resolution there?
This is not related.
The resolution is there. We're going to read the last. We get the three resolutions?
Yes, Your Worship, we have three resolutions. The first, Planning Heritage Resolution, moved by Deputy Mayor Lana Yankoff, and seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Let it be resolved that council approved the bid from Upland Planning Plus Studio in the amount of $148,760 plus HST to undertake the development of pre-approved housing designs in support of the city's accessory dwelling unit, ADU program, as outlined in the agreement between the city and the Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation, CMHHC, through the Housing Accelerator Fund Initiative, and that the mayor and the CEO are hereby authorized exude standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Deputy, did you want to speak to that, or just?
I would just note that you'll see in the, in the report that the committee and the staff have differing recommendation. The committee are recommending that we go with the local company, whereas the staff had recommended that we go with Upland. So that would be the only thing I would note, but it's already in the report anyways.
Question's called? Okay. Did you want to question the council? Well, press a button. Okay. Go ahead.
So if I understand it correctly, Planning Board is indifferent towards a recommendation from our senior management. In the planning department, we're not going necessarily with the lowest bid. The aim and objective is to support local, shop local, and support our local businesses. You know, last month, I tried that. I tried that with one of our construction firms here, here for 1949. You know, so, you know, if, if there was support for, at the board level, for, you know, shopping local and promoting our local businesses and the jobs and the tax base, you know, the economic spinoffs, I guess my question is, if you're going to support it in this instance, why didn't you support it last month? I thought I made some pretty compelling, you know, sound reasoning to support our local businesses. So, you know, this, this comes back to the waiting for the procurement bylaw, and hopefully in that procurement bylaw, it will illustrate points for local businesses, particularly here in the city of Sherle Town. Thank you.
Counsel Duran?
Did you happen to get an answer?
No.
So my question is, I know the scoring system had a very big gap between the lowest and the, the recommended firm that, that the management wanted to go with. You know, we're, we're looking at a very tight between that bid and the lowest bid, right? It's only a couple of thousand dollars. But the scoring was so high. So what, what is the difference? Like, you know, I guess senior management looked at it and determined that this other company hit all the points that they were looking for. So I, I will go ahead with the, with the recommended resolution here, but, you know, we keep saying this, buy local, you know, support local, but we don't do anything because the procurement. So are we going to have to change that, or are we bound to do that? Like where does the first step go? We have to give a certain percentage for a local firm. If it's only a small amount of money, I mean, we have lots of construction firms, we have paving firms, we have building firms. If, if it's under a certain amount, we should be doing that to support local. But where's our legal, you know, points that we can do that? So we keep saying it every month, but we don't get any further ahead with it. So someone's got to do something here. Thank you.
Norman, you want to go there? Counsel Beck, go ahead.
Yep. Just a point of clarification for Counsel Twill. This recommendation claimed from Planning Committee, Standing Committee, not from the Planning Board. The Planning, the Planning Board comprises resident members. This recommendation came from the Standing Committee, which is myself. Counselor McCabe sat in as chair on that day, and the deputy was out of province. So the vote was, was made at the, at the Planning Committee level, not, it did not encompass the resident members' perspective on this. So I think that's an important, and I'm not quite sure, I'm not quite sure why that was, but that's, that's where it was anyway. The other thing, just to tag on to what Counselor Duran was saying, I, I would be as supportive as anybody to be able to support a local company wherever we can. But the important thing that we have to keep in mind is to work within the current parameters within which we are currently existing. And if we want to make any changes to our procurement bylaw, that's a later point. Right now, we have to go within the, the, what was prescribed in the RFP. The scoring was done in accordance with what was in the RFP, and similar to what we had with the Public Works Package of a couple of weeks where it went to council, it came back to council, went back to committee, there was a legal clarification sought. I think there are some similarities in this particular case as well, too. So while I would love to be able to unilaterally support a local company, I think what, what is important here for us, we have to follow, is the process. And what Counselor Duran did say as well, too, there was quite a discrepancy in the, in the scoring department. Donna and Mike, Donna and Dave, sorry, did a very good job of outlining that at the committee level meeting. So there were quite a few things. So I was comfortable with the decision at the time, and I'm comfortable with the decision here today, and I will be supporting staff's recommendation to give the bid to Upland Studio. Thank you.
Okay. I'm just going to let Counsel Bernard speak, and then the deputy, I think. Do you want the deputy to speak?
Sure.
Okay. Deputy, do you want to speak to points that were raised by Counselors Twill and Duran, and I guess, and also Counsel Beck?
Thank you for that. I, I guess, just to echo what Counselor Beck had said, I was, you know, about to point out the same thing, that this, this doesn't, this is the type of item that does not go through Planning Board, because it's a, it's a budgetary item that was already approved in our budget, and it, and it's not, it's not an application for a, it's not a development application. So that's, therefore, that doesn't go to Planning Board. It goes through, directly through committee on to council. And yes, you're right, procurement is, is an ongoing struggle. And for me, I, I had actually supported not staff's recommendation in this situation. I, you know, although I'm, I'm not a part of the evaluation of an, of an RFP, I do think that, that, you know, with the, with the limited information I do have, I, I felt that Sable Arc was very much had the ability to take on this job for us. And to say if we had a more clear procurement bylaw and policy, and, and we were a little bit more part of the evaluation process, I would have had more information to go on. But that's where I was at with that, and I guess I'll turn it back over to His Worship.
Counsel McLeir.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brown. Just in a nutshell, I, I'm certainly supportive of the resolution, certainly supportive of the staff and the work that they've done. I know our bylaw, I think this still falls within the parameters of the current policy that we have for procurement, as good or bad as that is. And I know we're, you know, we're hopefully very shortly going to have our procurement bylaw, you know, updated. So I, I recognize there's a dollar difference here, but the, the overall, the overall scoring and recommendation of staff, I support. Thank you.
So as was said by Counsel Twill and Counsel Duran, it's six years we've been talking about the procurement bylaw. Six years. And, you know, we have former controllers, business managers that come up with templates for the procurement bylaw. This, this goes on too long. And there are different, different evaluations. For the, for the paving contract last month, I didn't see the criteria, the points. I just saw one, one criteria, lowest bid. I did ask what were the other criteria? Experience, equipment. But it wasn't evaluated. It was just, what we saw was the price. Outright Counsel Twill, you chaired the meeting, so, you know, like we need some parameters. And CAO, we've been asking, we have to get this dealt with ASAP, procurement bylaw, so we can recognize local, local contact, local content. Counsel McLeir.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. And add on to your comments and your statements and, I guess, concern. I have met with the, the CAO recently on this, you know, on a personal meeting. It was one of, you know, one of my items. He shared with me, there's been, you know, there's been considerable work done in the, you know, the last number of weeks on this, and I have full confidence that, that we're going to have something for this council in, you know, you know, in a very short time. And again, there's, I'm certainly wanting to, you know, to have this thing advanced, get it, it'll, it'll never probably be perfect. It will be move and document, but we're going to get there. I'm fully confident of that. Thank you.
Counsel Twill?
Just on the procurement bylaw, I think it's imperative that, that we engage with our local businesses, like construction firms and some of the professional services that the city of Sherle Town has enlisted over the years to make sure that their concerns and their questions are answered. I know there's a lot of confusion sometimes with, with tender documents. They fill out the form to find out later. Some of them are disqualified, and they're wondering why they're being disqualified when they believe that they're filling out the application and it's, it's in its entirety.
the application and it's, it's in its, in its entirety. So I think it's important, before we bring that procurement bylaw to council to vote on, I think it's important that we collaborate with all the construction firms and all of the service providers, whether it's buying vehicles, uh, engineering firms, uh, professional planners, any one of those ones that the city of Charlestown has done business with over the last number of years. It's important to get their input as well because, you know, they, they, that's, that's their bread and butter, and they want to make sure that they're doing their due diligence. And lots of times, some of these firms that have been around here for several decades get disqualified and they're very, very frustrated. So let's make sure that they're involved in the process. Thank you.
Deputy, did you want to just follow up?
Sure. Thank you. I was just going to just dovetail on to what Counsel Twill was saying and that it is, you know, honestly, it's, it's a bit bizarre that we take procurement through council, we're basically being asked to, for lack of a better word, rubber stamp something that we have had really no involvement in in the first place. So it's certainly going to be, um, uh, refreshing when we have, uh, some documents to be guided by better in terms of procurement bylaw and policy. So that's all I had to say on that.
Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, interesting. I, I guess we all would like to see local win every bid if we can. Uh, I think right now, the reason we go to tender is to get the lowest price, the best deal for the, the city taxpayer. But it's also a rating system, so you can get the best deal, get the best work done. The cheapest is not always the best, and that's why they changed to a rating system. But I think at the end of the day, we can't go to tender and then when the results come in, we don't like them. Try and change it. And that's where we get ourselves in legal trouble. And I think the, the procurement policy, if it's going to be changed, whether it gives a ten percent, uh, advantage to local companies, what have you, but it has to be written in the policy, or we're going to court again and we're going to lose. So, I mean, right now, we have a, the, the policy's in place, it's what we have to follow. We can't just come to council and say, because we don't like who won the bid. Look for reasons to change it, or you'll be, you'll end up in court. So until, until the procurement policy changes and it's gone, and the legal, legal representatives go over it and make sure that that's, that's a legal document, it's going to work, we're bound to, to the results of the tender policy. And staff does the review, the criteria is laid out in every one, whether it was the paving one or whether it was this one, the criteria is laid out in every tender. And that's what staff does, they go through that criteria, see if they followed it, and score it. And these are the results. Thank you.
Yeah. I've said this many times, everything we do in this chamber is legally challengeable, whether it's Iraq or the courts. Captain Ramsey, Counsel Ramsey, question?
Question called.
Question's called. Question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Deputy?
I'm not in favor of the, of staff's recommendation.
Contrary? Against? A two. Okay, next one.
Planning and Heritage Resolution moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff and seconded by Counsel Julian McCabe. Let it be resolved that the major variance for the subject property addressed at has six Irwin Drive, PID six eight four six nine six, to allow for an appointment-based home occupation to accommodate an online grocery business be denied.
Okay. Oh, yeah, no, I have, I have to get there, Counsel Twill, just go right ahead there. Go ahead. Please stand up. Thank you, sir.
I understand that the applicant had pulled the application. And, uh...
What's that?
I understand that the applicant had pulled the application. So, uh, they were dealing with, uh, their, the respective, uh, planning officer. I'm surprised to see this here, they're under the impression that the application request was made to pull the application.
Deputy, did you want to just defer that, or do you want to speak to it?
I, I'm happy to speak to that. And Counsel Twill, if that's the case, as chair of the Planning and Heritage Committee, I was not privy to that information. So if that's the case, I can say, one, I'm disappointed that I wasn't aware of it so that I could have pulled it. Or two, I'm sure that the planning manager, I would assume, has probably a really, um, good explanation, and I'm suspecting it's because maybe it was too late in the game to pull the application, so it had to finish the process. But I'm going to allow, um, um, Manager Gondrum, if he could just speak to that, if, um, if he could. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy. Mr. Gondrum.
Okay. Uh, thank you, through, through your worship. Um, it, Counsel Twill is correct that there was a, um, request that was brought to planning by the applicant to have the application rescinded or, or removed. Um, that request came in after the agenda had gone out, and we just didn't catch it. We didn't, that's a failing on my part, that we didn't, uh, reach back out to clerk staff to have it, the resolution pulled. So at this juncture, um, yeah, a request has been put in for the application to be rescinded. Um, I'd leave it to council to decide what to do at this point, so.
So we can just toss it?
Um, yeah, we could just, uh, not take a vote on the matter and just call, call the resolution rescinded.
Yep. Katie, is that all right to do? Do you want to just give a?
That's fine.
Just put, rescinded. Okay, that was easy.
Or withdrawn.
Or withdrawn. Thank you. That's democracy in action, right on the floor there, CAO, huh?
Thank you, Your Worship. Planning Heritage, uh, bylaw, or resolution, sorry, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Julian McCabe. Let it be resolved that the following major variance for the subject property addressed as ninety Cumberland Street, PID three four one four six one be approved. Reduce the setback from the front property line for a freestanding sign to zero point zero meters. Two, to allow an electronic sign to be erected within a thirty point five meter, hundred foot radius of a residence. And three, to allow the maximum electronic sign area to be increased to thirty-two square feet, two point nine seven square meters.
Question's called? All those in favor? Deputy?
In favor.
Thank you. Okay, that's it, sir? Oh, no, there's a first, first reading to amend the pedestrian mall bylaw, is that what you're going for?
Yes, Your Worship, there's a first reading, uh, to amend the pedestrian mall bylaw. Uh, reads to amend the city of Charlestown pedestrian mall bylaw, Part Two. Definitions, Part Four, Section five two. Attending on pedestrian mall. And Part Four, uh, Part Seven, Section seven point three, penalties assigned by law number two zero two five dash PM dash zero one, and reference the municipal government act of Prince Edward Island. First reading be resolved that the bylaw to amend the city of Charlestown pedestrian mall bylaw be read a first time, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff and seconded by Counsel Julian McCabe.
Okay, so this is, allows for debate discussion? Just want to call the question? Charlotte Carey?
Pass.
Good.
Second portion of that.
What's that?
Your second portion of that.
Yeah. Okay, but we're still in the first reading. That's all, yeah. Deputy Mayor, okay?
Yep, that sounds good. I just, in case, um, anyone didn't have a chance to read the entire report, just to know, although this seems to be a coincidence, this has absolutely nothing with us granting permission for a one-year pilot project for the folks on Vic Row to, um, extend their hours. This is just a housekeeping issue that the staff happened to notice while reviewing that separate application.
Very good. And the management and staff there at, uh, Planning, Development and Heritage. Uh, do you want to read the next one there? CAO?
Yes, Your Worship. Further to letter resolve that the bylaw not be approved as a city bylaw and that it be entitled the city of Charlestown pedestrian mall bylaw, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff and seconded by Julian McCabe.
Charlotte Carey?
Pass.
Deputy?
Pass.
Thank you. You got the next one there, a second reading, I believe, there, chief, or deputy or CAO? Yep.
Your Worship, uh, this is a, uh, a second reading of the zoning and development bylaw, uh, PH dash seven D point two, to adopt bylaw PH dash seven D point two dash zero nine nine, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw. By amending Appendix C, approved site-specific exemptions of the city of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw as it pertains to twenty Ralston Avenue, PID number three nine six nine three seven, in the low-density residential R two zone, to allow for the existing building, uh, three hundred and twenty-five square meters, uh, between, which is three, thirty-five hundred square feet, on the subject property to be used as an automated, automotive repair shop, and that the automotive repair shop be added as an additional permitted use for the zoning that applies to the subject property, subject to a development agreement being entered into between the, the applicants and the Let it be resolved that the bylaw to amend the city of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw, uh, PH dash ZD point two zero nine, as it pertains to twenty Ralston Avenue, uh, be read a second time, um, as attached was read and approved at a first meeting on June tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Let it be resolved that said bylaw be read a second time and approved, moved by Alana Yankoff and seconded by Julian McCabe.
Okay. Shall it pass? Okay. Contrary? Okay, contrary, I have, uh, counselors.
Pass for me.
Yep. Beck? McCabe? Okay. There's no discussion on it, but?
No, no, it's just procedural question.
Go, go ahead. Yep.
Um, is it possible to have your vote changed from the first time to the second time?
Yeah.
You can vote definitely the first time.
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's the freedom of voting.
No, okay, thank you.
That's democracy. It's, uh, okay. Anything else there? CAO?
Oh, has it?
Oh, it's changed, it's, it's changed before, don't worry about that. That's good.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Public Works, Counsel Mitchell.
You're welcome, Your Worship.
Thank you. Counsel Twill, you want to give your report there, sir? Thank you.
Um, thank you. Members of council, uh, just some brief notes, uh, prepared by our manager, Yalver. Thank you, Yalver. Uh, the Public Works staff continue to work diligently across all divisions as we enter the busy summer months. Crews are focused on delivering critical repairs, beautification, maintenance programs to keep the city safe, functional, and welcoming, welcoming residents and visitors. In addition, in addition to these core programs, staff, staff are actively completing sidewalk, curbs, catch basins, storm line repairs, asphalt patching, sign installations, tree trimming and planting, widespread plow damage repairs. Various capital projects are also included, for example, municipal building upgrades, street resurfacing, new stride, new sidewalk construction, fleet management and procurement, engineering designs for master plans and road reconstruction projects. Uh, more information can be found in the operational capital summaries, summary sheets. Uh, just a couple of things I would like to, uh, bring to council's attention, I'm going to, uh, ask our staff to put it on our agenda, um, for future discussions, is when we're having, uh, humid hot weather here in the city, I do have a concern about our employees that are working out there in that humidity. I know we did receive, uh, an email from our communications, uh, James, uh, but I, I brought this up last year. I'm very, very concerned about, uh, you know, the health, health and safety of our employees when you have that kind of humidity and that kind of heat. It, uh, brings a lot of, uh, you know, health concerns to our employees. Uh, I'd like to know what exactly is the breaking point, so I'm going to ask our senior administration to have a look at that for all departments, not just Public Works. But, uh, when you look at, you know, the asphalt crew and the spreader crew, I can tell you, that's pretty hot work. And, uh, we want to make sure that, you know, there's water there for all of our employees, uh, in their crew cabs or at the site. Want to make sure that, uh, you know, they're, they're taken care of and, and we certainly don't want to see anything happen when it comes to, uh, when it comes to humidity. Some of that humidity is, is very, very challenging and very uncomfortable. Uh, when we talk about capital projects and work that needs to be done, I want to bring to your attention, it's no surprise, North River Road. North River Road is, is, uh, is a capital project that needs to be done sooner rather than later. We did have an open meeting, we did have consultants, uh, bring forward some recommendations. But if you look at North River Road today, North River Road is backed right up, in some cases, right to Kirkwood Drive. And I know there's a lot of frustrations with the vehicle traffic trying to get out to, uh, Capital Drive and beyond. We have a lot of people that, uh, work in the city, that, uh, commute back and forth. Um, it's no secret, uh, this, this, this is happening now more frequently with the traffic backed up. And I think, you know, whether it's the, the Public Works Committee and then eventually the council, we need to make North River Road a top priority. We've got to address that, and we got to start looking at what our options are, whether we need land acquisition or, you know, whatever the capital costs are, but we've, we, we, it, it's, I see it on a daily basis. So North River Road has to be a top priority. Um, want to talk to you about Queen Street, something that's near and dear to my heart, Queen Street, and, uh, whenever there's a storm surge, I've been lobbying for the last number of years, Public Works is looking at some options. I wanted to bring the council's attention that, uh, you know, if you go back over the last number of years, whenever this is a, a rain surge, rain surge or storm surge, uh, from Douglas Street, and you could take it all the ways, even as far as, uh, Pond Street, Connolly Street, uh, when that water rises, it rises about four feet. So, uh, you know, I've talked to our staff and I want to make sure our residents know that that's on the docket. That's very, very important, that we protect the residents down there, because whenever there's a surge, that water rises, uh, SUVs drive through there, take liberty, and that water flows into people's homes and their properties and causes tremendous damage. And I would even hurt, I would even argue that it's, uh, very challenging and cumbersome when it comes to insurance. So, uh, looking forward to, uh, final game plan for Queen Street so that we can move in that. And the last thing I want to bring up is Mount Edward Road, uh, pardon me.
Mount Edward Road? Is that in the report? Or is this?
It's my report.
Okay, okay.
So, so the other thing I wanted to bring up is Mount Edward Road. Mount Edward Road, uh, you know, again, a lot of commercial traffic, a lot of industrial traffic, uh, residential traffic. We don't have any, uh, uh, sa- safety pedestrian walkways on, on the west side. So again, that has to be a, a, a priority as well. Those are just some of the projects I wanted to bring to council's attention. I'm sure you all have, uh, projects too that you'd like to address, and I'll open the floor for any questions. Thank you.
Counsel Dron, I know you've been waiting there. The mic is yours. And just list up your projects, please.
Thank you. I have three or four questions here. Um, I'll, I'll be quick. You know, I'm glad to hear you say Mount Edward Road there, so I, I hope you look at that when you're looking at North River Road. But the first three questions I have is, um, in your notes, it, it was the discussion around the Sherwood Hall, and we discussed the Sherwood Hall at Parks and Recreation as well. And I, I just wondered, I, I know in your notes it says Parks and Recreation and Public Works are going to get together. I mean, here we are, we passed the budget in March, and we're here now, it's middle of July, first week of July, and... of July, first week of July, and we're saying in the next couple of weeks, we're going to go out on a tender. And I didn't really, I wasn't part of this, what's going in the tender. I know we're not going to move the lawn bowling, I mean, that's been there forever, and the rink's been there forever. So I don't know the tender, what it's going to say, like where, where would a new community hall be? I guess that could be attached to the rink or, or whatever. You know, I'm just, I'm just trying to get a feel for where we're going with this. I don't want to be locked in for a couple of months to go out with a tender and come back. We have to look at what's really happening here, is, is the lawn bowling has been there forever, and the rink's been there forever, so we only have a limited amount of room. And that leads into my second question, is the vacant house. The vacant house has been there since, I'd say, for two years now. We cut the grass, there's trees to the side, there's a daycare there. You know, we went out to tender a year and a half ago, and nothing's been done, nobody wanted it. We were talking about going, donating the house, but I don't think anybody wants that either. The other day, last month, I've seen some pipes go under a house close to Spencer Drive, so I was thinking that was going to move, but we're at a standstill now. We have, we have to get this stuff going. We have to get that house moved, we have to get the other two houses moved down there. And the third thing is, when we move those houses, we were talking about Spencer Drive extension. And I know the people in Ash Drive, they want to be informed of what's going on. We talked about a concrete barrier that people wouldn't go in, but is there going to be any public consultation? Is the community going to be able to come out and see, you know, where the driveway's going, where Spencer Drive's going? And I know a lot of developers are waiting on our move for Spencer Drive, so I'm just wondering if you could touch base on those three or four questions that I asked. Thank you.
Councillor Dran, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Three questions, and you get another question if you want to. Councillor Twill? Okay, go ahead, Ed.
Well, those are good questions. Sherwood Hall, I'll take a shot at it. We discussed at the Public Works Committee, and I know there's discussions going back and forth with Parks and Recreation. One of the options is now they're going to go to tender to look at what the possibilities are. As you mentioned, you know, the house is going to be moved, that gives us more, 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 more property to, to look at what the, what the future uses of that property. But long-term, the aim and objective is to replace Cody Banks with a brand-new facility. If you look at the model on North River Road, the new Simmons, I think that when you talk about a community component, we'd like to kind of parallel what took place at Simmons. And I think councillor Dran, I think that's, that's one of the options. I believe it's a viable option, it's a realistic option, it's a responsible option. And we're still waiting to hear back from Parks and Rec and our manager in Public Works. We had a good discussion, but I think if you're to look at the success of the facility in North River Road, I'm just speaking for myself, that's what I envision on Maple Avenue. Same, you know, the same standards, same amenities, same criteria. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and that's pretty exciting. Very, very exciting for that community. And I know, I know that it's, it's, it's been a long wait, but I think it'd be fantastic when that comes together. So we're still waiting on more information from our manager in Public Works, and of course, our manager in Parks and Recreation. The vacant house, why hasn't that been moved? I'll try to have an answer for you tomorrow as to what the status is, or maybe our manager can say, say it now, but we will see what can be done to move the house. But that house, that property is going to play a critical role with regards to a new, a new facility on Maple Avenue. On the public consultation for the residents that live in Ash Drive, as you know, we had public meetings down at the Confederation Centre, it was hosted by the Public Works Committee and Department at the time. The residents in Ash Drive are very, very concerned about anticipated increase in traffic. We have Mulberry Park, a lot of residents are very, very concerned. I think it's imperative that we have an open house or a public meeting so that the residents can see firsthand and have an opportunity to talk to, you know, the consultants and our staff, to make sure that their concerns are being properly addressed and effectively answered. So I'm all in favor, I brought that up at our Public Works meeting, and I'm, I'm all for public consultations. We want to make sure the residents are truly informed. I hope that gives you an answer. Thank you.
You're welcome. Resolution there, CAO?
Public Works Resolution, moved by councillor Mitch Twill and seconded by John MacLair. Let it be resolved that as per the conditions of the public request for proposals for three dump bodies, three eight-foot dump inserts, and two two-and-a-half-ton truck caps, one slide drawer and cap, and one V plow and slide insalter, the submission of action car and truck accessories through the canoe procurement program in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-two cents plus applicable taxes be accepted. And the mayor and the CEO are hereby authorized to execute the standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Easy one. Call the question there, councillor Twill?
This one.
Question's called by councillor Twill. All in favor? Deputy Mayor?
In favor.
Thank you. Okay. Good to go. Closing comments there, councillor Twill for Public Works? Okay. Just one second. Green light, I want to go red light.
Pardon me? Okay, I neglected to mention, although all the work that's being done, that the Public Works crews are doing a first-class job. Our department is probably one of the best departments in Canada, and just drive around and look at some of the work they're doing, it's, as I call it, top shelf.
Now, as I say, great things happen here because of Public Works. Okay. Move on. And the next one is economic tourism and cultural development, councillor Terry Bernard and who's? Oh, I wanted to go to tourism, I wanted to see what was going on. Okay. Councillor John MacLair, finance, audit, tender and administration. Please, you want to present your report?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. The, no report this evening, as it says in the, your package, we're, and this is not up-to-date, our, our next meeting is going to be Wednesday, July sixteenth, at noon. So there's no reports or resolutions in your package. I guess the, and I shared my comments earlier as it related to the procurement bylaw, and I know it's on everyone's mind, and as I shared with you, I did meet with CAO, and there's been a lot of work done on that in the meantime, in the last few weeks, so it's, it's not an idle file. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go to economic tourism and cultural development, councillor Terry Bernard, Ward ten. Oh, question councillor Twill? On the finance? A report? Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor MacLair. Just wanted to bring to your attention, back when council voted, back on June the twenty-seventh, and that was to approve a hundred thousand dollars for the lights for, for UPEI alumni field. At the time, even before the resolution was passed, and since, I made an inquiry about a memorandum of understanding, I know a document was signed by the mayor and the acting CAO, I believe, to approve the funding, but based on inquiries I made, it was supposed to be a memorandum of understanding, and I'm not sure if, because memorandums and understandings are supposed to be passed by council. So I'm just wondering where the, are we going to be getting the memorandum of understanding? That's my first question. Thank you.
Okay, just, again, this is not, he had no report, so you can send him an email.
No, no, the resolution's passed, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, but, but that resolution's not here. It's not part of the report.
I got it right here.
And when was it passed? Last year?
No, no, it was passed June the twenty, yeah, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. So I'm just wondering about the, I've waited, I've been patient.
Was that the special meeting? It was passed at? The special meeting? Yeah, so that should have come under, that should have come up under business arising.
You don't want.
No, just let me finish, let me finish. Business arising out of the minutes, that's where it should have come up.
No, it wasn't in, it wasn't in the business of the last minutes.
Twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
Last year, okay. Anyways, can, can you send him an email about it? Because we have to move on. Can you send him?
Move on, okay. Let's just move on. We're supposed to get a memorandum of understanding. I just asked the man a question.
Okay.
Right?
And councillor, okay, I'm, I'm listening. Go ahead.
So, yeah, so I think it's a fair question.
Okay, just answer them, we can.
Fair question councillor Twill, hundred percent. So I did, can't speak on the spot here on the memorandum of understanding, but can share with you, talked with Bruce Donaldson, and that money and those lights, I think, I'm going to say, I think, or I think the lights are operational. But as to the, as to the memorandum of understanding, I will certainly circle back with that in, in consultation with CAO, and we'll just see, see where, where we're at with that, and definitely come back with information on it. Thank you.
Councillor Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. Your Worship, our committee met on June the nineteenth, and the minutes are in the package. Couple of highlights, like to see, the Hotel Association PEI, as everybody can see, has requested an increase in TAL from three to four percent. The presentation was made, that will go back, staff will do up a report, and it'll come back to our next committee meeting, will then be forwarded to council. So Your Worship, some events scheduled to get underway here pretty soon, within the next few weeks, in Charlestown include the Charlestown Race Week, Winslow Charlestown Royal Soccer Tournament, PEI Pride Festival, Canadian National Old Timers Baseball Federation Championships, and the Charlestown Dragon Boat Festival, so lots going on, Your Worship, as we're into the, the peak of the summer months. Want to initiate, Your Worship, a special thanks to all the city staff for a job well done on Canada Day celebrations, and especially put together where the fireworks were canceled, they had to be on July the second, so job well done. And Your Worship, glad to see the city application that our staff put under culture, that they apply through the Commemorative Partnership Program at Veterans Affairs Canada for repair and restoration work on the War Memorial, the city is getting twenty-five thousand dollars towards that project, so pretty happy to hear that. And Your Worship, if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Thank you.
Councillor Beck? From Ward three.
Yeah, thank you for your report councillor Bernard. I just have a couple of questions about, it's actually under the Arts Advisory Board, so I don't know whether you would be able to answer it or not, but it was referencing the, on page one twenty-seven, the one percent policy will be an important addition to the city's art program. Can you talk about, tell me what that is? And the other part is about the mural that was done by the elementary students, that would be possibly, maybe just what that is as well, too, if you could maybe, what the, does that just go up, and is that just an operational decision, or does that have to come back through a resolution of council in terms of what it is and where it's going and that sort of thing?
Yeah, usually though.
Councillor Bernard, go ahead, go ahead councillor Bernard.
Usually, usually those murals that will come through council, for council's approval. That's what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that usually becomes through council.
Or is that only in, does it only apply in the five, in the five-hundred-lot area, where we had like the Erica Rutherford thing to come up, or the signage on the, so I thought there was a little bit of a differentiation between.
There may be through planning, I mean, there's probably a planning question, but for me, most, most of those murals that come through, that before they go up, they come through council for council's approval.
Okay.
The one percent, I'm going to take a crack at it, I think that's the, I thought it was hard, and that was a policy put in place a number of years ago for every new building that the City of Charlestown had, had put under construction. So for example, the Malcolm Dare Center, when it was built, you'll see a lot of the art that's in there on all the churches on PEI. So all the buildings that we do, there's supposed to be a percentage of the cost of the, the building to go towards art. So if it's that one percent, Your Worship, I think that's what that is. If somebody else can clarify.
That's, that's the one percent on capital cost.
Yeah, yeah. So any new bill that we do, one percent to go towards the art, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Yeah, and councillor Beck, that, on page one twenty-seven, that mural was a mural that was created by a Quebec artist that came down here and worked with students from Alant Montgomery, Francois Biot, and I think, I think, I think they were the only two schools. And if it goes to the exterior wall, then it has to go through planning. But if it's going the interior, I don't think it would require any approval. Yeah, so it will be, it's, it's done, and I was, I was out to see it, and it's, looks very, very.
So it's already up?
Very Canadian, it's, no, I was there when they were working on the mural.
Oh, I see.
At Francois Biot.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Human resources. Is that true councillor Beck?
Yeah, so, human resources, actually, we just met this afternoon, so we, we don't have anything for you. If there are any, any questions, or, we're good, but we're not that good. So anyway, if there's anything you're wondering about, feel free to pop me a question.
Councillor Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. The strategic priorities, Communications and Integr governmental Cooperation Committee met on June twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty-five. The minutes of that meeting are in your package. We have four resolutions for your consideration this evening, and if there's any questions, I'll do my best to address them. Thank you.
Councillor Twill, do you want to ask a question on his report?
Oh, yeah. I do. I do want to ask a question. Read the article in The Guardian today, and I think that was discussed at your meeting about Boulder Park. I was somewhat surprised that we don't have total independence when it comes to the future or current, current decision when it comes to Boulder Park, and that we have to receive approval from the Speaker of the House and Legislative Assembly. I was shocked to read that, and went back, looked at the resolution. City of Charlestown enters into a purchase and sale agreement to follow this Confederation Building Trust to purchase the property known as Boulder Park with the following terms and conditions. Condition number one, purchase price of four point eight million. Condition two, one million payment at the date of execution of the purchase and sale agreement, anticipated payment March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Item three, annual payment of three hundred and eighty thousand per year for the next ten years commencing in the fiscal year of two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six. Nowhere in this resolution does it say that we have to consult, or we have to collaborate or get approval from the Legislative Assembly or the Speaker's Chair. So how, how did this happen? How did this happen that we don't have total control of the destiny or, or what takes place on that property? How come there was no discussions? Why didn't we have those discussions? Unlike most councillors, I didn't know. They said you had to be, read it in the fine print. Well, it should have been in large print, not fine print, large print, and it should have been in this resolution. Why wasn't it in the resolution? Like, I, I'm at a loss as to how that happened, or why it happened, and I just don't think that's responsible government, folks. Four point eight million dollars, and we don't have total control of that property? That's a new one on me, all my years involved municipal politics.
Can I just add councillor Bernard, it didn't get reflected in the minutes, but I did make reference to the Victoria Park Act that governs our Victoria Park Promenade bylaw, that we're subject to the requirements in that act.
That we're subject to the requirements in that act? So, we have to adhere, like, for example, we cannot charge anyone to go into that park or we cannot charge activities. Secondly, we have the Confederation Trail that runs through the center of Charlestown, thirteen point four kilometers. We don't own it. We maintain it and take care of it for the province, provincial, so that's, that's a requirement. So, I'll just let you add, that didn't get reflected, but thank you.
Thank you, worship. Uh, thank you, Counsel Twill, for your comments. You know, I certainly raised those very same concerns in, in their meeting that was brought forward and, you know, through our discussion and understanding, I, I think what ultimately was overlooked, and I'm always speaking on, on behalf of myself when I say overlooked, um, would have been the, the agreement that was in place, um, and as I indicated, and they used the words in the, in the fine print, um, and then that came to light during that discussion that we've had. So, I as well am disappointed in the fact that we feel like we've made a very significant investment into that piece of property. And now we come to, to learn or to better understand, maybe is the key word here, is to better understand that we actually do not have full care and control of that piece of property. Uh, and there's two levels of, um, of approvals or authority that we, you know, we must go through, um, in order to, uh, do anything in there. And I know there's, what they're, I think it's called the Legislative Assembly, uh, Act. Committee? That is, um, you know, we got to go through the clerk at the Legislative Assembly.
Yeah.
And they're working on a new policy around that entire block, I believe it is, uh, it's alluded me what that, what they're calling that right now. But that's also going to encompass that property. So, you're right in what you're saying is that, you know, essentially, we don't have full care and control of what we can do on that property. The only thing I can say to that, you're asking the question, how did that come about? My understanding is that was, there was the fine print in the report and it was not talked about in great length. I think the, what the real disappointment here in this particular situation was, is that when we were debating this purchase and, and having discussions, I, I really personally don't believe that that was raised up as, as a point of, um, of clarification. That might have resulted in a different outcome, possibly. I, I don't know why it wasn't raised from, from within the administration to council, uh, in, in those, in those restrictions that are on there, uh, but now it seems as if that came to light in our meeting last week. So, I asked the question, well, first of all, why did it come to that meeting, um, and not, you know, part of parks or somewhere else? I, it was determined that it was, uh, through intergovernmental affairs and they felt that was the most appropriate place to have that report come back, uh, or to that, the discussion at, at that time. So, um, you're in the same situation I'm in in the sense of that information, um, and what we knew or didn't know. And I guess I'll reiterate again, the disappointing component of this is, is we really didn't, it wasn't highlighted enough, I think, to have a full wholesome discussion on that impact on making that purchase. I hope that addresses some of your questions, but that's about as all the information I have on how we got here.
Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, worship. Yeah, I was, I was, I mean, we knew there's some restrictive covenants on it and the restrictive covenants that came with it, it was just basically a green space and parkland, it was remain green space and parkland.
Right.
What surprises me, I guess, is, is the province or the Speaker of the Legislature is working on a land use policy now that we've purchased the land. I don't believe there was any intention of using the land for anything different than what it's been used for already. And then this mistletoe Christmas festival came along and there was a rumor that, well, they may not allow that. Well, they've allowed it for the last three years, I can't see why we wouldn't. But we, one, I wouldn't mind getting a legal opinion on, you know, does the province have the right to put a land use policy in, in place now after we've purchased the land? And two, cause usually restrictive covenants will carry over into, to when you buy, when you buy a piece of property, there's restrictive covenants out and they carry over. And what I'm reading for restrictive covenants is just that the, the property shall remain zoned as green space or parkland, shall remain as green space or parkland, and no amendment to the zoning of the property or a change in its use shall be permitted. I think everybody's okay with that. So, it's just a matter, I, I think what's kinda scaring us a little bit here is, is that they're working on a land use policy and I guess, one, why now and two, we should be involved, we're the, we're the landowners of it now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bernard, I appreciate.
Can I, can I, did you wanna answer that or did you, can we just get, can we get a few counselors?
There's only reason why I can't just do it right now.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Hey, made me lose my train of thought, but thank you for your questions and your comments. So, that was also brought up during our committee meeting is, is with this new ground use policy that I think was what also came to light during our discussion. And as I indicated, um, you know, we certainly need to be at that table, um, as, as a partner in whatever that may look like. We did not go down the suggestive path of possibly seeking, uh, a legal opinion as to whether or not they can or can't, uh, embark upon something that, that impacts that land, but certainly very supportive of that if that is something that, uh, our CAO can look into as part of the process here. Uh, but nonetheless, I think that we do need to be a part of whatever goes forward on this from that ground use policy and any other further amendments to the, you know, the use of that land. So, um, you know, we wanna be an owner, but we also wanna be a partner on that in, in, you know, in a primary partner, not, not a, not a secondary or a third, third partner in this. So, uh, thank you for your comments.
Counsel Beck, I'll ask you there, can you just press your button, I'll put you in. Okay.
Thank you, worship. Yeah, just, uh, I, I, I'll add my name to the surprise covenants part, cause it was not talked about. I don't think, I, I would have to agree with Counsel Bernard that I don't think there's anyone looking to do anything different than what Boulder Park is. And I think we're all in the, I think the three levels of government are all in agreement that this is, we don't wanna do anything other than what it is right now. Maybe, um, when I originally asked the question at one point in time, I said, I didn't want widespread usage of it, but something like the mistletoe market, I think fits very well with that area. And so, when we were going through the land purchase agreement, I was under the assumption, falsely so, or maybe bad on me, whatever it may be, but that we were, we, we controlled that part. So, instead of our economic development department having to go down and seek approval from the province or whoever, we could operate that and we could say, this is an appropriate use. The Hanukkah ceremony that took place there last year was another one that I think fits very well with, it's perfect, it's a great setting. You, you and I were there last year. Uh, and so, it's, that's the sort of usage I think we're looking at. I don't think we're looking at making it a, you know, concert venue or commercial, commercial entity or anything like that. I think if we could turn back the hands of time, I just wish that that maybe had been a little bit more articulated, that there was that, and the restrictive covenants is pretty narrow and it's pretty sane, leave it as it is. And I think if we had known that, it, it probably, everyone would have been okay with it. And, um, kinda what Counselor, um, if I, when I watched the meeting that took place and there seems to be a willingness on, uh, on our CAO's part and everyone to be at that table to discuss about what is the appropriate usage. And I think that's where we want to get to. I think we wanna make sure that that area is being used, being preserved, being maintained, and if it's gonna be used for anything other than a park, that it be used judiciously and, uh, and that it's carefully thought out as to how that use will play out. So, bit of an unfortunate thing, but it's probably not a bad thing that it came, came to light at some point anyway.
Did you wanna comment that, Counsel Bernard? No? Okay, 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 okay. All right, Counsel Ramsey?
Yes, I was surprised too when I watched your meeting that day and I was saying, what's going on? We, first of all, I was one of the ones that said that we're overpaying at that time, but we knew what, what, at the end result was gonna be, was for the Senator down there to help them with their finances. But at the same time, it was landlocked and I was total shocked. And your worship, I like to sort of, I talked to you two or three times on this and you keep saying there's something there with Victoria Park and all that, but we own this piece of property, we don't own the park down there or things along that line. So, that, that's why I thought when we bought it, we, we have final say and we have the only say on it. Like you could, like you can talk about Victoria Park and their bylaws and all that, but that's not owned by us. Like, that's maintained by us, but that's not owned by us.
And we spend a lot of money on it too.
No, but I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Like, we put four point eight million on, on this little piece of property over there and then all of a sudden we find out, I don't know whose fault it was, I mean, we can't use it, you know, the way we want. It, it isn't ours, basically, it's the province. So, that, that's the only thing. Either there's a difference between that park and then the one down the street. So, thank you very much.
That's where, Counsel Twill.
You have to get approval.
Wanna wrap it up? Counsel Twill?
Yeah.
Yeah, you are.
I, I guess what I'd like to find out, I, I think you said, or what I read in the newspaper, Mr. Mayor, you said you knew about this. What I'd like to know is, who actually conducted the negotiations, um, to purchase this property? Who, who was involved with the negotiation? Michael Roos said he wasn't involved with, uh, he wasn't involved with the negotiation. So, who was negotiating behalf of the city? What member of the senior management team or elected representatives were, were negotiating to purchase, purchase this property? And, um, if other levels of government are gonna be involved in the decision-making process, then you know what, they should come to the table and cut the check. It shouldn't be just the City of Charlestown spending four point eight million dollars. Province shouldn't be in and the Fed should be in.
They are.
No, they're not.
The province is in and, yes, and the Fed's are.
No, 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 come on, come on.
I was at the announcement.
What?
I was at the announcement.
Here, here's the announcement right here.
Twenty four million dollars coming from the province.
Here's the announcement right here, four point eight million dollars.
Okay. CAO, do you wanna address that?
So, who, who was involved with the negotiations? That's my first question.
Yeah.
Who?
Just one second. CAO?
Well, your worship, um, certainly we can get back to Counsel Twill, um, who exactly was involved in that, but, you know, the point was, you know, I think clearly made that, you know, council, this should have been highlighted to council, but it was, the covenants were outlined in the package, right? And, uh, although, uh, we, we certainly hear the point that it should have been, um, made more clearer.
With resolutions come background reports, Counsel Bernard. Oh, Counsel Bernard, did you, did you wanna? Quick one? You're all right with that, Counsel Bernard? Okay, good, I just wanna make sure.
I just didn't wanna give the media or anybody listening the impression that we can't use the land for what we want. I mean, we, we got it as a park and a green space, we plan to use it as a park and a green space. So, I think the underlying question is the, the land policy that the Speaker of the House is putting together, we don't know what that is. But, I mean, like I said earlier, we, we, we had intended to use it the way it always had been used.
Yeah, green space.
And I think that will still, that still will happen, so.
Okay.
Thank, thank you for that clarification, Counselor. But I think what, what might be unknown here is, we don't know what that plan is going to commit with and that could ultimately change what can and can't be done there. We don't know that. So, I think as we work forward, uh, you know, we certainly wanna be at that table and, you know, and be in a strong advocate for the things that have occurred on that property over X number of years and continue to have the ability to do so. Uh, you know, I would really hate to see some of these things getting clawed back as a result of this new, um, as they're called, the, the ground use policy and then, you know, what the provincial, so it adds a couple layers of complexity to it. You know, I think just ultimately what we were expecting was, city bought property, city determines what's on property, et cetera. It does not appear to be that simple anymore.
Yeah.
So, we need to get this in simplicity around what that's going to look like going forward and as a result of that, hopefully, we can move on and, and use that property as intended. So, thank you for everybody's comments on this this evening, thank you.
Resolution there? Yep, he's gonna read the first one.
Thank you, worship. Uh, first resolution, Strategic Priorities, Communications and Intergovernmental Cooperation, uh, moved by Counselor Justin McCart and seconded by Counselor and Deputy Mayor Elena Yankoff. Let it be resolved, the council approved the award of the network modernization RFQ to Pure Logic IT Solutions with an estimated cost of eighteen thousand, five hundred and forty six dollars and sixty four cents plus applicable taxes. And that council approved the purchase of an additional four switches with an estimated cost of eight thousand, five hundred and thirty two dollars and twenty cents plus applicable taxes for a total of twenty seven thousand, uh, seventy eight dollars and eighty four cents plus applicable taxes.
Question? Question's called. All those in favor? CAO, Deputy Mayor?
In favor.
Thank you. Next one, sir.
The second resolution under Strategic Priorities and Communications and Intergovernmental Cooperation, moved by Counsel Justin McCart and seconded by Deputy Mayor Elena Yankoff. Let it be resolved, the council approved the award of the computers RFQ Evaluation One to CDW Canada Corporation with an estimated cost of forty eight thousand, three hundred and forty seven dollars and sixty eight cents plus applicable taxes. And the council approves the purchase of five additional laptops with an estimated cost of eight thousand, three hundred and fifty five dollars and thirty five cents plus applicable taxes. And further, the council approved the award of the computers RFQ Evaluation Two to CDW Canada Corporation with an estimated cost of twenty nine thousand, two hundred and five dollars plus applicable taxes for a total of eighty five thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and three cents plus applicable taxes.
Question? Question's called. All those in favor? Deputy?
In favor.
Okay. Next one, sir.
The third resolution under Strategic Priorities, Communication and Intergovernmental Cooperation, moved by Counsel Justin McCart and seconded by Deputy Mayor Elena Yankoff. Let it be resolved, the council approved the award of the Public Works Network Cabling RFQ to Hanson Electric Limited with an estimated cost of fifty four thousand, one hundred dollars plus applicable taxes.
Question? Question's called. All in favor? Okay. Deputy?
In favor.
Next one, sir.
And the fourth and final resolution under this, uh, Strategic Priorities, Communication and Intergovernmental Cooperation, uh, moved by Counselor Justin McCart and seconded by Deputy Mayor Elena Yankoff. Let it be resolved, the council approved, discover Charlestown's booking request to hold the mistletoe market for the twenty twenty five season on the property of Boulder Park, PID number three, four, zero, four, two, two.
Question? Question called. All those in favor? All those in favor? Yep. Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
In favor.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Bernard. For Ward Two. Okay. Parks, Recreation, Leisure Activities. Oh?
No.
Oh, Protective and Emergency Services, I keep jumping ahead. We're moving forward. Oh, go ahead, hold on. Counsel McCabe?
I know, trying, thank you. So, our Protective and Emergency Services Committee met on the twenty third of June, the minutes are in your package. We don't have any resolutions for consideration, but we'll answer any questions if there are any.
Counsel Twill and then Counsel Dron.
A couple of months ago, I asked for you to take back to your committee to have discussions and my requests were, uh, my request were, um, like to know how much drugs is coming in from out of the province? I, I'd ask that question. How many drugs is coming out of the province and coming into our city? Like to know the amount of drugs that are on the city, city streets. Uh, secondly, um, when it comes to, uh, oh, I'll add this, when it comes to weapons, uh, police department did a raid here, uh, a couple of weeks ago, major concern about the safety of neighborhoods with all the weapons that were seized. I'd like to get some kind of an idea of how many weapons are on our city streets? If you could put that on your agenda? Put that on your agenda?
Yeah, go ahead. These are, these are not issues that are in my existing report and, and I'd like us to get on the same page. Either we're allowed to talk about things that aren't in the report.
I asked.
Or we're to stick. I will, send me an email and we will.
No, but I did ask, a couple of months ago, I did.
Okay, I just took over as the chair, but I will, if you send that to me and we have a new chief, she's making a note, an email, we'll follow up on that.
Yeah, okay.
And I think that's a good point, I think a lot of stuff, especially if it's not in the report, it's just an email to the chair or the manager to get your questions answered and get that.
But I did bring it up and, and I did bring it up and, you know. No, I understand that, but I did bring it up.
I will follow up.
And, uh, the, the other issue that I brought up was money laundering. You know, like, um, you know, I, I hear all kinds of taking place down the eastern part of the province, I wonder what's taking place here in the capital city. I wonder what's taking place here in the capital city. So, I'd like to try to get an idea about that as well. Now, the other question I have, or the other thing I'd like to bring up, is last night I attended the convention for the firefighters. I thought it was probably one of the best sessions I've ever attended. And I think we are going to have to, council's going to have to deal with the recommendation from the firefighters. We had firefighters here from all over Atlantic Canada. We had firefighters from across Canada and down, representatives from the United States. So, firefighters are looking for support for their request to have four members, four firefighters per platoon, when they go to a fire. I wanted to bring that up, Mr. Mayor, because I think there's an urgency.
That's a negotiating item, sir.
No, I understand that. I understand that.
If you understand it, why do you bring it up?
Because it's important. The firefighters, the firefighters want it brought up, sir.
Well, am I wrong to say that that's a negotiable item? Am I?
I think we have the CAO talk about this.
CAO, can you just speak to that? I don't think that should be discussed here. Anyways, can you just address that, CAO? Just have a seat there, Counsel Twill.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I agree that certainly something the city has already stated its position on this particular item. And, you know, although I did also attend the information session last night, and it was informative, but this is not the forum to discuss that here tonight. And again, to Counselor on the caves' point, like consistency in speaking to things that are on the agenda or in the packages is important, you know, to keep things moving here. Appreciate your concerns. If you could put it right into the chair, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, and Counsel McCabe, you're more than willing to accept emails, and I know your response, so I'm not questioning that. I think you've done that before with counselors and constituents, so.
I think we just need to know what our process is.
The process is what's in the report.
And then anything, I will follow up. I usually email right away to the people that need the information.
Because I know you're good at doing that, so.
But I think we have to be following consistency in here.
Well, I think it says in the procedural bio, it has to be in the report, correct?
Well, that's another thing we'll talk about when I'm fit.
Okay, Counsel Duran.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you, Counsel McCabe, for your report. I also thank our acting chief here. I'll note the minutes here about the recruiting of new cadets and where we're going in that road. That's very proactive and great thinking. We're going to take that, and we're going to take it back to the Water and Sewer Committee to see if we can do the exact same thing. So, thank you, Chief McCarron. And secondly, I spent most of my afternoon on the phone dealing with concerns of the neighborhood. And it's on page 168 of the report. Just trying to get it here. It's the monthly statistics and the reported and actual. Now, what is going on on the other side of Mount Edward Road? You know, there's been encampments there. Our police and public works have helped out a number of times, but it is provincial land. We've discussed that we were going to reach out to the province to see what we could do. Nothing came back to myself or the committee in that regard. But the people on Fairview Drive have said they've been broken into last night, laptops into sheds, they stole cords, and there's a whole bunch of garbage down in that woods. So, I don't know what we can do. I told one particular lady that I'm just leaving my house. I'll bring it up tonight to see if there's any action we can do on a provincial level. And she thought maybe that I was trying to pass the buck. I did say to contact our MLA, but after getting a couple of calls, I'm at a wits' end of what are we supposed to do? We clean it up, they come back, there's garbage there now, the guy wanted me to come down. I said, I'm leaving right now. So, I don't know where to go, who to turn to, who to ask, you know. What are we going to do? Maybe you can help me.
That is in the report?
It's a really good point. And it's really confusing, because it's like even how we deal with things in here when we had tonight. Some things are in planning, some things are in economic and development. But maybe, Jen, do we have an action plan with the province when we're dealing with these issues or like a Coles note spreadsheet that we could understand and look at when we're trying to answer these questions? I haven't seen one.
I know the property you're referring to, that Mount Edward Road, it is provincial. So, when we get complaints, we call the provincial government. A lot of the times, it's usually provincial government and public works that work together. Our guys will go down standby while they do the cleanup. But it is, it falls under provincial government, so it's under them for the cleanup, essentially.
Just to clarify, Counsel Bernard, okay, you wanted to ask your question. Is it the property that's just south of the, Sisters of St. Mary's, the mound? The green space where the horses are?
Yeah, bit before that. By the.
Go ahead.
It's between where the horses are and the federal government building in there. So, there's a whole bunch of trees in there. And we've been doing this now for quite a while. You know, you contact the police, and they go right down, which is great. And we get them removed, and then the public works comes in, and then we call the province. But as quickly as we can get them in, I mean, I think we did that one day, and then they come back an hour later and set up camp again. So, you know, this lady in particular said about the drug use on the Confederation Trail, the farmer's market, you know, what are we going to do? And she's beside herself, because she's lost stuff in her car. And I said, well, I don't know. I don't know where we're going to go with it. Or are we just going to react to each incident, or is there a proactive? And, you know, I did, my wife said to me, she said, well, why don't you get some of the people from the outreach to stand there until they clean that out? Because we're getting extra services from our police department to stand there. So, every time there's a new encampment come out, can we get someone to make sure they don't come back every day, right? So, but again, I understand it's provincial government land, but what are we going to do? Are we going to cut the trees up? You know, we had a problem in a park in my ward that they were hiding under the trees and, you know, four or five or six of them sleeping there. Well, we trimmed the trees up. Is that something that we have to do, or can we ask the province? Like I said, I'm at my wits' end. I don't know what to tell these people. And they're scared, right? Just like Counsel McTard's people are scared. It's a province citywide, but I don't know what to tell her or what we can do about it.
Or just take it on?
I'd add to that. Like, when it is provincial land, and I'm sure it's in the city, we still have policing jurisdiction, do we? Yes? No? Yes?
Acting chief, our CAO, do you want to respond to responsibility and how we carry it out?
Yes, your worship. Certainly, we do have police jurisdiction within the city, but I think we all realize this is much more complicated when it's, you know, a land use and homelessness issues, a lot of dynamics around it. I think active communication with the government is good, and, you know, we still have to, Counsel Duran's point about circling back with what is, comes out of those meetings, was noted here tonight, so we will get back to him on that. And I think our chief would also be open to probably extra patrols in that area, given the citizens' concerns.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Let's find out who owns the land. Is it provincial or federal? Because that pathology lab is federal. That's a federal one.
Yeah.
It's provincial, between there and horses. There's a line up.
Okay. Counsel Twill, and then Counsel McTard.
Yeah. I just want to make a recommendation. Now, I alluded to it earlier. The CAO says, you know, we can't discuss it. It's a negotiable item. But it was referenced to the convention that took place last night. I'm going to recommend that city council meets with the firefighters to hear firsthand the concerns that they have. That was a very informative session that took place last night, and I think it'd be advantageous for all members of city council to hear that presentation. So, I just want to bring that recommendation forward. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. I just want to further elaborate on some of the, you know, we're addressing, we're trying to figure problem solving here for some of these issues. And certainly, those same issues exist in the areas around Park Street, and they continue to exist on a daily basis. Maybe, you know, with our police chief and the CAO, you know, and working with the province, I'm not sure why they can't establish a bit of a, like a government team that addresses a lot of this. Like, what's happening is it's consistently falling within, like myself as a counselor to communicate with these areas and, you know, whether there's encampments being started and garbage and debris. And of course, we send somebody down, and the, you know, public works might be cleaning, and then it happens just immediately right again. So, I think it seems to be more of a reactive response instead of a proactive approach in monitoring our greater, you know, area of Charlton where no one spots her to be head with this. So, I think it's just, you know, a recommendation that we could put forward to the provincial government in seeing if they're willing to establish some type of crew that could, you know, proactively monitor these areas and take down these things that are setting up very quickly and removing garbage as opposed to it being reactive. Like, I feel like, you know, I'm sending an email today, and then tomorrow it's gone, and then I'm sending it the next day, and it's continuous. So, I just wanted to further elaborate on Counsel Duran's concerns for those situations, I think, and across the city, not just those two locations. I'm sure there's many other places that this is occurring. So, it's a recommendation that I'm putting forward to the CAO and any conversations you're having with the province regarding, you know, the outreach center and encampments and those types of things with our unhoused. Thank you.
Okay. No resolutions? Counsel McCabe?
Your worship, just like I could, you know, I think if we could also get the chief to, there is a lot of work that's happening on those very premises, monthly meetings and working groups to try to problem solve this. And I'm sure the chief will get back to us, kind of outlining what's going on, because there is a lot of work happening every day to try to problem solve these issues.
Okay. Parks, recreation, leisure? I don't think there's a resolution for, is there a resolution for protective emergencies? No?
No.
Do you want to, chief, CAO, do you want to let him read his report? Do you want to give some highlights in your report there? Counsel McTard?
I'm up. Thank you. The Parks Recreation met June 30th. The draft minister in your package. We have one resolution, your worship, for council. Any questions? We have our manager here, Frank, and myself, that are trying to answer. Thank you.
So, some questions here, CAO, from the report. Counsel Twill and Counsel Beck. Okay, Counsel Twill and Counsel Beck.
Yes. I don't believe this is in the report, but I think it's very important. And it's regarding the farmer's market on Sundays that is taking place down at Confederation Landing. Last year, we passed a resolution to approve the farmer's market down at Confederation Landing. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but was there a resolution brought forward to approve the farmer's market down at Confederation Landing? Can you help me with that, sir?
Can we get back to you on that?
Well, the farmer's market's already, it's operational now. And we had great debates here last year. There was supposed to be an evaluation that was supposed to come back to council. There was joint meeting with Parks and Recreation, Economic Development, Tourism. You can recall that, Counsel McKinnon. And here we are. We're not involved. There's no discussions and no resolutions coming before council. Two resolutions came before council last year. Why wasn't the resolution brought forward this year?
Again, Frank and Economic Development, we have a meeting coming the last, fourth Tuesday of this month. Can we have something that comes forward then, at that point?
So, what I'll do is I'll have to take an advisement and look back at last year's resolution. I don't have it memorized here right now, but once I refer to those details, I'll get back to you with a response.
Counsel Beck?
Yeah. Just, I just wanted to reference Counsel Bernard's remarks on page 192, I believe. I'm not sure if I'm looking at three, one, not about the curling rink. And the, I know curling has been a bit of a discussion item in terms, especially with the demolition of the curling club. It's been lost in the community, has been identified. I know there's been people who mentioned it to me at different times. And I'm not advocating one way or the other right now. And, but my only thing would be is that Belvedere has been undergoing renovations with its own building. So, if there are some discussions that are going to be had about potentially looking at a curling rink and going to the Net Zero Initiative and stuff like that, that the timing would have to be pretty soon as opposed sooner rather than later, just because of the fact that there has been some work that has gone on there. I know I am a member of Belvedere, so I've seen the work going on there. But if there is something to go, that conversation should happen sooner rather than later. Thanks.
Yes, thank you for that. Norman, yeah. There is off the record conversations going on right now. Our parks, as we brought up our last meeting, are sort of looking at if there is any funding out there along that line. And we will certainly keep you updated on that, because we would certainly love to see it happen. But as you said, we're out there, too, and it's happening all the time, like they're doing renovations every day out there, and they're really improving it. So, it can't happen in two years' time. It has to happen very shortly. But there is discussions going on to see if there is funding out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ready for the resolutions?
One, sir.
Yep. One resolution from Parks, Recreation, Leisure. Counsel Ramsey?
Moved by Counsel Kevin Ramsey, and seconded by Counsel Terry Bernard. Let it be resolved that as per the recent request for proposals for the Victoria Park Tennis Court servicing and court lining, that the low bid submission amount of $97,103.00 plus applicable taxes from Pro Sports Servicing Incorporated be accepted, and that the mayor and the CEO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question's called. All those in favor? Deputy Mayor? You're in favor? Okay.
In favor.
Okay, 10-0.
In favor.
Thank you. Okay, that's it. Okay. Water, waste water. Counsel Robert Duran. Ward six. Green light? Red light?
Green light. Well, thank you, Mayor Brown. And, you know, I don't know what happened, but the Water and Sewer Utility Committee did not meet since the last regular meeting in council. We don't have any reports or resolutions for your consideration. But Counsel McTard had emailed me on July 2nd and said that he couldn't attend the meeting on July 10th because he had another commitment. So, I wrote the director, the manager, and everybody on the committee, and I said, okay, if we have quorum, we'll meet. If not, we'll reschedule. And I thanked him for his email, but no one's get back to me yet. I know last month, we had a very heavy agenda. Out of that agenda, we had a number of points that we wanted to address, and we were even thinking of a special meeting. But things went by the wayside, and we never had it in time of this council meeting. It was my intention that we would still go ahead on Thursday to have the meeting, but, you know, I get no confirmation. And now, I found out that you have to attend another meeting. Counsel McTard has previously phoned in and or emailed me and said he can't. So, I don't know what to tell you, when we're going to meet, if we're going to meet. You know, it's certainly disappointing. We have a very heavy agenda that we want to get things done. So, I'm asking the director here, because her manager is here now. I didn't see you. I was looking this way. So, someone get back to me, set the meeting as quickly as we can, but not on Thursday. That would be great. Thank you.
Well, Counsel Duran, thank you for your openness and transparency. Okay. We have environment sustainability. Counsel Trevor McKinnon from Ward eight.
Thank you, your worship. Environment Sustainability Committee did not meet in the month of June. We do have one resolution for your consideration. It's not in your package. Maybe in the second package to come out, I'm not sure. The Food and Council Advisory Board met on June 19th. Minutes of the meeting are included in your package. And a few notes here, just like to add on, that by the end of June, there's been over 2,500 trees, shrubs, and plants planted in parts of our urban forest restoration program, and more are planned for the fall. This year, the annual gardening in small spaces included residents of all ages. Participants took part in hands-on learning, creating their own vegetable containers, container garden to take home. This event will likely continue next year. Transit ridership for June exceeded 125,000, 6.8% higher than June of last year, and new routes are being worked on to be implemented for this fall. Transit shuttles were successfully trialed for Canada Day in Victoria Park. 300 people used the transit with no complaints received, and staff hope to build on this success for next year. And Bike Week was a great success during the second week of June with collaboration from Cycling PEI, Rising Tides E-Bikes, PEI Bike Guy, and others. Bike Week included the Bike/Bus Pilot Program with positive reviews and feedback at West Kent and LM McHenry Elementary Schools. Staff are looking forward to expanding the Bike/Bus program to more schools in the fall. That's my report. Thank you.
Great report there, Counsel McKinnon. I say that pollinator garden out there in West Royal is looking great, out by the West Royal Immunity Center.
Does.
Does look really good. Any questions? Any resolutions? Okay. Or is it motion? Or do you have a motion there, sir?
We have one resolution, your worship. Moved by Counselor Trevor McKinnon, seconded by Counselor Norman Beck. Let it be resolved that council approved the purchase and... Council approved the purchase and December 26th delivery of six new transit buses from Nova Scotia Bus for $5,524 and $241 before taxes, and that the mayor and CEO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution. None of us.
That's a good announcement there, there, Counsel McKinnon. Never told you about that today at the meeting. It's good news. Want to call a question?
Question called.
Question called. Oh, no, Counsel Dron, do you want to... Do you have a question? Go right ahead.
Yeah, is this part... I was just reading the background here. Are we getting federal provincial funding to help us out with this? So this is not a full expenditure on our behalf, right?
You want to break it down? Is it all right, Counsel McKinnon, that she further... Can you just break it down, please?
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. This is part of our ISIP funding, which is a federal provincial municipal split, 40... Don't quote me on these exact numbers off the top of my head, but I think it's like 43%, 33% the rest municipal.
Counsel Dron?
I appreciate that, because a lot of...
And I think it's in the financial implication section. Sorry.
I've seen that, but when somebody asks me, "Are you paying that much for buses?", they don't really understand. So I'm just wanting to clarify that, you know, there are partner funding in it. So thank you very much.
Do you want to call the question, Counsel Dron?
Sure.
Question called. All those in favor? Deputy Mayor? What a boy. Deputy?
In favor.
Okay. Okay. Next item, notice of motion.
Your worship, we have a notice of motion, agenda item 6.11, as per Section 86, brackets 3 of the Municipal Government Act of PEI. This is to renew the notice of motion to amend the City of Cheryl Town procedural bylaw at the next regular meeting of council.
So notice of motion. Do you want a clarification there, Counsel Matart? Go ahead.
I don't believe you're allowed to ask questions on the notice of motion.
No.
It just is a clarification. I'm not sure what it is, and so who's bringing it forward? Because this is procedural bylaw.
Yeah.
Would that have come from my standing committee? Yeah, so I guess maybe I'm just a bit confused. So maybe procedurally, can we explain what it's here and what it means? Because we're not... We're still in some form of discussions and collaboration on the procedural bylaw.
Right.
We intend to have a special meeting in council, I think, on August 6th. The next meeting will be August 11th, I think, or...
Don't have the agenda in front of me, but you're right, it's in August.
Yeah. So maybe just an explanation. I didn't understand what it was.
And again, I think Tracy said this before. We have to do this until we deal with it, right? That's why the notice is read.
So it's just a procedural thing?
It's just a procedural.
Okay, I wasn't sure if...
There's nothing else.
Something I missed as a committee member to move that forward?
We're legislative. Yeah. Okay.
Until we pass. Okay, that's great.
Same question, Counsel Beck.
Yeah, it was the same thing. And I guess just on the other part, on August 6th, what we're doing is we're having, it's effectively a special meeting to have an open discussion, like, so it's kind of... It's kind of just an informal discussion that we're having here, correct? Am I... On August 6th?
Not necessarily. If council decides they want additional amendments, that's at that point where you would bring that forward.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's... We already received housekeeping amendments, committee of the whole information sessions and all that stuff. So what we're discussing on the 6th is any potential additional...
Could be.
Right. And that'll be a group, an informal... Not an informal, a formal group discussion that we will be having.
Again...
Notice is just...
Yep. No, that's good. Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Any new business? Motion adjourned. All in favor? Counsel Twill?
In favor.
All in favor? Ready to go. Thank you very much.